Good evening. The City of Riverbank Regular City Council Meeting and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, March 12th, 2019. The time is 6:00 P.M. Please stand.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Heavenly Father Jesus for this day that you provided for us. Thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us. Tonight, Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to you and ask that you lead and guide this council in each and everything that they do. We ask Heavenly Father Jesus that you bless them, give them wisdom, let them, Heavenly Father, know to make the choices that would best suited for this city, this community. And Heavenly Father, we just ask that you put your hand upon each and every one in this community. Lift them up, Heavenly Father, give them praise. For those, Heavenly Father Jesus, tonight, that need a touch from you, we just ask that you touch them and bless them. Heavenly Father, be with each city employee, be with each person, Heavenly Father, be with our first responders, Heavenly Father, be with our local police department, our sheriff's department. Those, Heavenly Father Jesus, that just keep going forward, Heavenly Father, when so many turn their back. We ask you, Heavenly Father, to bless each one in this chamber tonight. And Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Proceed. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member District One Louise Uribe.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Two Cindy Fossey has an excused absence. Council Authority Member District Three Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair, excuse me Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
Thank you.
There will be no changes to the agenda tonight. Any Council or Authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. CNN, we're going to go directly into the presentations. If I can have Ursula Zamora up, please. The one on the table works?
Okay. All right. So you're from Casa. And after I read this, I'd like you to just speak a little bit about it, because I see it every week coming through, and I'm amazed by it. Do I have to turn it on and off? All right. A certificate of recognition presented to Casa Del Rio Family Resource Center. Congratulations on your twentieth year anniversary and commitment to your mission. Casa Del Rio Family Resource Center has been serving the Riverbank community since 1999. Our mission is to improve the well-being of children, families, and communities by providing increased access to resources and services that support health, wellness, and education. Thank you for your tireless efforts to serve those in our community. Signed today, and once again, thank you very much for all the hard work you did. Now, are you going to speak for them? Let me get behind you. He wants to take a corner. Is this okay? Looks good. Well, no, I don't think so. Three to one ratio.
You don't want to repeat. You can have the whole desk.
(inaudible) Thank you. He mistook picking. No, no, you had something in your hand. You had a stick, you know, covering up.
Why is everybody leaving?
He's being nice, it was me in the background.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, before I bring up, I would like all the women from the Women's League or Society to come on up, all of you. You know, throughout the history of the United States, women have done a tremendous job in serving this country. During the American Revolution, Deborah Garnett and Anna Lane were serving in the Continental Army alongside their husbands. Now, Anna Lane said it was because she wanted to make sure her husband did her job, his job, but they both were wounded severely, and they were the first women to receive pensions. So that was amazing. And throughout our history, we have some magnificent women. And tonight, we're going to honor the women of the United States and this group here, who have been around for over fifty years. They came through some of the most difficult times of Riverbank, and they're poised to contribute greatly in the next fifty years. You better be. The City of Riverbank Proclamation Women History Month, March 2019. Whereas the City Council of the City of Riverbank has designated the month of March 2019 as Women History Month, and whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas, American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of labor force working inside and outside the home. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by producing the majority of the volunteered labor force of the nation. And whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunities, but also the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history have been consequently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and the study of American history. Now, therefore, the City of Council of the City of Riverbank hereby proclaim March 2019 as Women History Month, and urges the Riverbank community to recognize Women's History Month by celebrating with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, signed today. And I want to thank you all for being part of it. There you go. And congratulations. Hi. I haven't seen you. Who you are? Marilyn.
Thank you, Richard.
Hi. All right, so who's the spokesperson?
Whoever grabs the microphone. Well, thank you very much for the proclamation for Women's History Month. And as you know, our club has been around for more than fifty years. We were here a couple of years ago for the fifty-year anniversary, and we continue to try to serve the community in our different activities. We're having a tough year this year because of the construction in the community center, as you know. So one of our biggest fundraisers, we're not able to have. So we're going to have to cut back a little bit this year on scholarships, but we will definitely be giving some out. We're going to have to wait and see what it looks like at the end of the year. But we have a good group of over twenty members. They're all active, not only in our club, but in the community as well. And it's a wonderful group, a mixture of people that live here and even in Modesto. We don't limit our membership. Actually, we don't limit our membership to women. We accept anybody who would like to be a member. Mm-hmm. Yes, we do not discriminate. And it's a wonderful group. We have a program every month. Diane Talafson is our new vice president, and she's had a program every month, which has been very interesting this year. And it's been a good year. So I don't know, would you like to say anything?
The name of the club is Riverbank Federated Women's Club.
I was giving it off the top.
Anyway, thank you very much.
You've been doing great work, even when you first started, because you raised a lot of funding for 1968 with the community center pool and the park. You've done a lot of excellent work. You have the entrance to Riverbank. You and the Rotary Club put that together. So your name is, you have a name on there with a flag. Yes. Yeah. So anyway, I did research you guys. I just got your name. Anyway, thank you very much. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Did you get pictures?
No, he didn't.
He's not fast.
Yes, I did. That's okay. Got the back of his head.
Here, you can take me.
No action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Are there any public comments today? I see no public comments. We'll go directly to the consent calendar, consisting of item three A, wave readings. Item three B, approval of February 12th, 2019, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item three B one, approval of February 25th, 2019, Special City Council Minutes. Item three C, a resolution to approve the appropriation of $31,000 from the Sewer Capital Improvement Reserve Fund, Fund 108, for emergency repairs to the Muffin Monsters grinder at the wastewater treatment plant. Item three D, a resolution authorizing the execution of a performance agreement with Chris Ricky Presents, Inc., for the coordination of the 2019 Cheese and Wine Festival. Item three E, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Chris Ricky Presents, Inc., for the city's property area to conduct the Riverbank Cheese and Wine Festival. Is there anyone wishing to pull any of the consent items? Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on any of the consent items? CNN, I bring it back to the council for consideration.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as read.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve, and a second on the consent calendar.
Council Authority Members Campbell.
Yes.
Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Item six one, status update on the Riverbank Designated Local Authority.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We have a couple gentlemen from Cosmont here today. They're going to, Mark is going to step you through a little history on the Riverbank Redevelopment Authority, what's happened since redevelopment has been dissolved, almost ten years now, or coming up on it, and where we're at and where we may move here in the future. So I'll hand it over to you, Mark.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Mark Persico. I'm with Cosmont Companies, and I am the Secretary to the Designated Local Authority, which is the successor agency to the Riverbank Redevelopment Agency. I have with me the Treasurer of the Designated Local Authority, Paul Baxter. And as the city manager said, I'm briefly going to go through a little bit of background on redevelopment in California, redevelopment here in the City of Riverbank, what the Designated Local Authority has been doing, and then touch a little bit, very briefly, on new tax increment financing. So tax increment financing, I believe the mayor is the only member of the council who was seated when the Redevelopment Agency existed. But tax increment financing was originally approved in 1945 in the state of California, and in 1952 is when cities and counties could actually do tax increment financing, which, as the graph shows there, relies on the increase in property tax values over time to be able to sell bonds and use those bond proceeds to do projects currently. I'll fast forward to 2011, when two bills were adopted and signed by the governor, AB 26 and AB 27. They were competing bills, and AB 26 was the bill that was actually determined by the California Supreme Court to be valid. And when that decision came down in December of 2011, redevelopment agencies ceased to exist on February 1st. So very quickly, again, tax increment financing, local agencies were able to adopt redevelopment project areas to do public benefit projects. And the typical life of a redevelopment project area was thirty to forty years. And over that period of time, projects that were within the project area and achieved the goals of the community were actually able to obtain public financing through tax increment. And that enabled the projects. At the end of the life of the redevelopment project, all of the taxing entities would then share in the appreciation in that property tax value over that thirty to forty-year period. During the life of the project area, all of the special districts, primarily school districts, mosquito abatement and library districts, didn't see the increase in property tax value. They maintained their property tax values that were established when the project area was created. So very quickly, in Riverbank, the Riverbank Public Finance Authority was created in 1990. That was a joint powers authority. And the joint powers authority was adopted to own, lease, purchase, receive, and hold property necessary or convenient for governmental operations. In 2004, the city adopted a redevelopment project area, which covered approximately forty-seven percent of the community, about twelve hundred acres. In 2006, and this is the body that currently exists, through federal law, the Local Redevelopment Authority was established, and that was for the reuse of the Army ammunition base. In 2007, the City Redevelopment Agency issued bonds in the amount of about fifteen and a half million dollars to provide for capital improvements, many of which are out in front of City Hall, the purchase of property, and to construct affordable housing. In 2012, when redevelopment formally ceased to exist, the City Council declined to become the successor agency, and therefore, the Designated Local Authority was formed, and the three-member board was appointed by the governor. In August of 2012, the bonds, because of the precipitous drop in housing values, the bonds that the agency had issued five years prior went into default. Since 2012, the Designated Local Authority has been meeting, the three-member board has been meeting on a fairly regular basis. And significant milestones were the sale of three properties. It does say on the PowerPoint, the Del Ray, I know that's a typo, it's actually the Del Rio Theater, was sold, along with the adjacent parking lot and the automotive repair garage. We started talking, the Designated Local Authority members, that is, started talking about approaching the City Council to see if the council was interested in taking back over the duties of the successor agency in January, actually at the end of last year. And then in February of this year, the Department of Finance sent a letter to the board members saying that the Department of Finance was no longer willing to pay for administrative support. I've been providing administrative support, along with the Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, Mari Sella. She's done a fantastic job over the last seven, seven and a half years, also providing staff support to the DLA. So the issue before the council tonight is, is the council interested in assuming the duties of the successor agency? Our contract, that is, the Cosmont Company contract, we also have a council that is a subconsultant to us, Joy Otsuki is her name, excuse me, with Lebold, McClendon, and Mann. She also will occasionally attend DLA meetings. So there's administrative staff support and legal support that are provided to the DLA Board. And those funds, those contracts are paid for by the Department of Finance. The reason the Department of Finance is paying for those is while agencies can pay for staff support out of the redevelopment property tax, in the instance of Riverbank, there is no property tax, are no property tax proceeds left, because the bonds are in default. And then very quickly, I will talk about the newest tax increment tool that the state introduced, EIFDs. And these are actually voluntary tax increment districts that are a cooperation between the city and the county. If the city and the county jointly form a EIFD, there are very significant improvements that can be undertaken through the EIFD. Very quickly, these are some of the projects that are possible, affordable housing, parks and open space, brownfield remediation, and wastewater and groundwater projects. What EIFDs do is EIFDs really signal to the private investment community, the city's long-term interest in economic development. And again, it does allow the city to do capital improvement projects using tax increment financing. This is a short list of cities in the area that either have explored or are exploring EIFDs. And the issue before the council tonight, it's in the staff report, the council doesn't, and I don't believe this is set up for the council to take action, there's really three options that have been identified. The first would be that the City Council would agree to assume the duties of the successor agency. The second potential option would be that the county auditor controller, which actually receives the property tax proceeds, could make those bond payments directly, without any involvement by the city, although there's some question as whether or not that's legal. And then the third would be that the DLA Board could continue with part-time support from city staff. I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, Paul Baxter is here. Paul has been, he's got kind of a unique background. and open space, brownfield remediation, and wastewater and groundwater projects. What EIFDs do is EIFDs really signal to the private investment community, the city's long-term interest in economic development. And again, it does allow the city to do capital improvement projects using tax increment financing. This is a short list of cities in the area that either have explored or are exploring EIFDs. And the issue before the council tonight, it's in the staff report, the council doesn't, and I don't believe this is set up for the council to take action, there's really three options that have been identified. The first would be that the city council would agree to assume the duties of the successor agency. The second potential option would be that the county auditor controller, which actually receives the property tax proceeds, could make those bond payments directly without any involvement by the city, although there's some question as whether or not that's legal. And then the third would be that the DLA Board could continue with part-time support from city staff. I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, Paul Baxter is here. Paul has been, he's got kind of a unique background. He came out of, he was an executive both at the city and the county level, and has now served on the board for the last seven years. So I think he has kind of a, a unique perspective as both a staff member and now a board member. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Did the makeup of the committee change by state law about 18 months ago?
What changed was there used to be, there's two levels of review that are required. The first is the designated local authority, which is three-member board, and then there's an oversight board. There used to be an oversight board for each separate DLA or successor agency. 18 months ago, those oversight boards were consolidated into one countywide oversight board. So the DLA membership has not changed. That's still three members. It's the county oversight board, which has changed. You are correct, Mayor.
The holder of the bonds, what is that, US Bank?
They are the trustee.
They're the trustees?
Correct.
Is not playing fair. So I don't understand why we want to take advantage of a bad situation with a trustee not playing fair to the bondholders.
We actually, as the DLA Board and as staff, don't have a position on that.
I do.
The trustee is under the official statement and the indenture agreement required to act in the best interest of the bondholders. In, US Bank is the trustee for a lot of different bonds. They're the trustee both here in Riverbank and in Mendota. In Mendota, they actually went to court to get a bankruptcy ruling in their favor with how they are making the bond payments. So they, they're actually making the bond payments in Mendota the same way they're making the bond payments here in Riverbank. And they're doing that, at least in Mendota, under a federal bankruptcy judgment, and they're using that same authority here. But in terms of whether or not they're playing fair, the DLA themselves don't, don't have a position on that.
Yeah, just as a clarification, the only people that would be capable of litigating that would be bondholders. We checked.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, we have standing to sue them on that.
They have called here wanting to know if we could put pressure, we refer them to you guys or to legal. Okay, what would be the benefit of Riverbank taking it over?
I think it would put the city in charge of its own future. It's hard to say what legislation will come out. As I briefly talked about, there are EIFDs, there may be other changes, there may be other opportunities for tax increment financing. If the city council were sitting as the successor agency, they could avail themselves of any new legislation that came about.
EIFDs will still take general fund property taxes away from the general fund, which is needed for a lot of the future. So EIFDs, in my opinion, are off the table right now. We're concerned with the, whether or not we want to follow up and take over.
Mayor, if I could just interject briefly? Most of the heavy lifting for the winding up of the former redevelopment agency's actions have been completed, and that's primarily the sale of the property. We could have conceivably filed our last and final ROPS, which is our financial reporting, had not US Bank had this bizarre sort of repayment schedule for the bonds. But given that is how the structure is, somebody is going to have to keep filing these annual statements through the life of the bonds, which is 2037?
Yes.
Something like that. And if the state pulls the plug on their financial support for us, we're just three laypeople, Wendell, Noraghi, Walter, Schmidt, and myself, we would have no staff.
And I, also, Paul, I appreciate you and others that have been here now for six and a half years. I truly do appreciate it. This is something that we'll have to talk about. Right now, I'm at so far reduced staffing, we'd have to see how we would be able to fit it in.
Right.
And then, again, I don't see how US Bank can fit in with the city of Riverbank what they did at Mendota. It's inconceivable that, they're saying that the city is bankrupt now.
No, no, no.
No, no, but that's, that was the basis of it.
Well, maybe Mendota went out here.
Actually, neither in Mendota nor in Riverbank did they say that the cities were in bankruptcy. What they said was that there wasn't enough tax increment to make the debt service payments. Under the indenture, which prescribes how the trustee is supposed to act, interest payments are made first, reserve payments are made second, and then the final are principal payments. So what they have done, what the trustee, that is, has done, and Paul is correct, the DLA, only, it's only bondholders that have standing to sue the trustee if they believe the trustee is not acting in their best interest.
Mark, can you speak a little bit to, do you have any insight into why the state of California decided to sort of discontinue compensating for the needed administration for this, given that, you know, they gave us two avenues to either take it over or, or relinquish it?
We had a conference call two weeks ago with Chris Hill, who's been managing this program for the last six-plus years. And Chris has said that the state believes that they've done a lot of the work, or they've paid for a lot of the work, as Paul has said, a lot of the heavy lifting was done in terms of selling the properties. And the only thing that's left to be done is to make the debt service payments. The state didn't articulate clearly why they felt that now was the time, but they just felt that they had borne the fiscal responsibility, financial responsibility long enough, and they felt that either the city or the county should assume those duties.
So with that being said, in your mind, and I get that you're, you're here representing the DLA, but can you speak to what, what would be the downside of having the county auditor controller just start to make bond payments? I mean, if that's essentially what's going to happen anyway, whether it be us or them?
Well, there's, it's not clear under the Health and Safety Code, which is how all of this is playing out, that the county auditor controller has the legal authority to make the debt service payments directly. What the law says is that the DLA needs, or a ROPS needs to be adopted. A ROPS is essentially the operating annual budget for the successor agency. So a ROPS needs to be adopted by the DLA or the successor agency, approved by the oversight board, and then submitted to the Department of Finance. And it's that budget which contains the authority to make the debt service payments. It doesn't say, under the Health and Safety Code, that the county auditor controller can make those payments directly.
So what's the worst-case scenario if that were the, way it played out, the auditor controller makes the decision that he or she is unable to legally do so, what happens?
From my previous experience, if you have some other governmental agency in your seat on your behalf, you're going to wind up paying for it at one point or another. I don't know what their choices would be to do that, but since the county would have control of the funds initially to make dispersments, they could conceivably hit you with an administrative overhead charge, even though there may not be funds available yet. It just, it's, it's a ministerial function at this stage of the game. There's nothing that we have discretion over, control over. It's a mechanical process of adding the numbers up, making the distribution, and then the bondholders get whatever US Bank decides to do. There's, there's nothing left to do other than the report. And if US Bank hadn't have come up with this strange distribution method, we wouldn't even be here tonight. It would just be, just a mechanical process that would be over with.
So we fell into unusual crack because of this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So just to play it out one more level, just to give them all the information, let's say that the auditor controller says, hey, we're going to make these bond payments, but this is some work, and we're not going to do it for free. Would they be charging the city of Riverbank or the successor agency to the city of Riverbank?
They'll be taking it out of the bonds.
Of the proceeds.
Right.
Conceivably, it could just take a little longer to pay off the bonds because you're taking more off the top.
No, the timeline is set. They'll just be taking it out of the bondholders' profits or nonprofits.
It's, I, I think it, it's difficult to say what would happen. I try not to speculate.
We're plowing your ground.
Absolutely, we are plowing your ground, yes.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the council? I think what we have to do is have a frank discussion.
I just think we need some kind of a workshop so we can get more information.
A frank discussion on this, options, and what we can do to solicit through our legislators, the Department of Finance, to get the US Bank to start following the fair laws instead of what benefits them. Because they're supposed to be the trustee for the bondholders, not for US Bank and their profits. So I think we, we need to sit down and discuss this. Thank you for bringing it forward. Do you have any further comments before I say next?
No, I don't. Thank you very much.
Well, no, thank you very much, Paul. Thank you. Give my regards to the rest of the board. Thank you. Item 6.2, 2020, 2025 Strategic Plan.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I am very pleased to introduce again Kendall with Regional Government Solutions.
Services.
Services and solutions. And Kendall and Steve both were kind enough to help coordinate a new strategic planning effort for the council this year, and took elements of previous plans and then built upon new ideas that the council brought forward in a, in a work session a couple weeks ago. I'm going to pass it on to Kendall to go through the plan, but I do want to mention before she gets started that I personally am very pleased with the end product here. I think it gives staff quite a bit of flexibility in how we achieve goals and also set up work plans internally. And so we really appreciate the, the process and the council buy-in. It's all up to you now, Kendall.
Thank you very much. And yes, thank you so much for giving RGS the opportunity to work with all of you. We thought it was a very productive, and actually a fun day to get everything out there. I'm going to be walking you through tonight what we took away from that meeting, and for those of you that weren't in attendance, that wall there is pretty much the summary of our meeting in your own hands. So we tried to take some of that and then, of course, put it in the plan itself. As you know, our process involved looking through your existing strategic plans, your annual budgets, all kinds of background information about projects and programs that were important to the city of Riverbank. This also involved meetings with each of you, as well as staff members, to kind of get a sense about what everybody wanted to get out of this process. And one of the things that we learned during that time was that the goal here was really to get a council-driven set of goals that was really coming from you, that then staff could be charged with implementing as we move on. One of the other things we did is take a look back at your mission, vision, and values. And we did take your existing, which we talked about at the workshop, and then all of you were kind enough to contribute some language of your own. So we sort of wordsmithed and combined a lot of the things that we thought came out of that discussion and present these to you tonight for your review. The mission of the city of Riverbank is to provide high-quality professional services and a safe, family-oriented community for our diverse residents to thrive. And you'll notice in a couple of these, we use diverse quite a bit, something that came out of that workshop, put many times. The vision, again, this is what happens when we look down 20, 30 years. The city of Riverbank is a regional leader in sustainable development, offering a unique, culturally diverse, safe, and welcoming community with a thriving downtown, recreational opportunities for all ages, and sustainable economic, sustainable economy that supports our growing population. I think one of the things we learned during the workshop is just how much Riverbank has grown in the last several years. And in fact, you know, was it 50 years, 50 years, six times, was that the? Six and a half times, so lots to say about that. Core values really go to what you all value, not only in your relationships with your community, but in your relationships with your staff, and the way you expect staff to treat each other, and of course, the public. So the core values that you identified for us, integrity, collaboration, the willingness to work well with others, transparency, can't emphasize that one enough, really making sure everybody knows what's going on, diversity, respect, customer service, innovation, and responsiveness. And responsiveness is not only just response for police and fire, but also responsiveness if someone's coming in to do a building permit or apply for a business license, or whatever that might be, making sure you're getting back to them. So through the course of our morning, you identified eight goals, and we are presenting these in no particular order, so they are all equally important based on what council told us. One, ensuring financial stability. Two, improving public safety. Three, improving the city's historic downtown. Four, improving both internal and external communication. Five, encouraging employee development. Six, promote sustainable development. Seven, promote economic development that supports a job-housing balance. And eight, maintain a high quality of life. Now, I'm going to briefly run through these. I'm not going to read the entire plan because I believe you had an opportunity to do that. And my sense is that the city will make this available online for members of the public that would like to take a bigger gander. But when we're talking about fiscal responsibility, some really overarching things, obviously maintaining sound and responsible practices. There are tactics underneath some of these. We have our goal, right? And then the strategy is sort of how we get there. And a tactic is the individual, either action item taken by council or by staff that makes that happen. So with this first one as an example, one of the tactics was maintaining a minimum of 10% of the general fund in reserves. And so in each one of these sections, we do identify some of those to see if they're actually going to worth, be implementable for those in there. One of the other things we look in here, this is 1.6, exploring options for service delivery mechanisms to reduce costs. And that can be anything from looking at how you're getting planning services to financial services to public safety, and ensuring that your contracts are reviewed on a regular basis to make sure you're getting the best value for the public's dollars moving forward. Now, we had a lot of discussion here about public safety, and this, these top two really are the most important things in most of the cities we work with in California. Number one on this is adequate funding, ensuring adequate funding for appropriate levels of staffing for public safety. Now, as you may recall, during the discussion, there was a thought that you might consider moving forward with a half-cent sales tax. There was also a thought in the previous one regarding Pers liabilities, that you might consider a bond. So we didn't list those specifically, but the intent here is that, based on council's input, once other information comes to bear, you would probably make a decision about whether you want to pursue either a half-cent sales tax for this, or perhaps float a bond for your Pers obligations, which I believe you'll be getting a report on later tonight as well. So the plan was structured in a way to give you maximum flexibility to adapt, but still consider that being, as I say, something you really want to, you know, keep in on. And we look here also maintaining safe, well-lit roads. This also includes things like completing the city's active transportation plan and continuing to support safe routes to schools. We look at the historic downtown, this is number three, basically working with community development, working with everyone to try to figure out ways to enhance this. Now, we had a number of tactics that came in out of this, including supporting code enforcement, opportunities for facade improvement programs. I think we all floated microloans, these sort of things. And again, as you get into your budget discussion, these are the kinds of things that staff will be looking at to see what can and can't fit within those other pieces. When we're also looking at structural amenities, this can be anything from downtown charging stations or connectivity for additional modes of travel, whether that be buses or trams or whatever that might look like. There's the mayor, and just as a little plug, tomorrow night, State of the City, obviously improving internal and external communications. And really, this goes to, as I said, both internal and external. And really, that's the council's desire to make sure that the city's residents know what's going on, businesses know what's being discussed, and it's a very open and transparent process. This also goes to working within the city itself to make sure that city staff have a clear understanding about what the goals are for council and what they want them to be working on. I think one of the important things in here, which came up several times, is promoting regional interaction and coordination. And that's something that Riverbank has done a really good job with, not only within other cities, within Stanislaus County, but reaching across to San Joaquin and to other areas. So the extent that you continue to build on that looks like it'll be really good for you. The last one on this, of course, was just considering possibly the appointment of a youth council to review issues of interest to them. Encouraging employee development, this really goes to training, cross-training, and making sure that we've sure that we've got succession in planning in place so that when people move on to another opportunity, there's someone to come in and fill in that position, or you've made plans to make sure that when the brain trust that is those employees has retired or moved on, that you still have knowledge there to continue that out. This also includes team-building opportunities, all kinds of fun stuff. Councilman Campbell, maybe we could take a big dive trip somewhere. It could happen. One of the other things on here is looking for, some of these get a little challenging, but you know, looking for ways to improve the tools that staff is using and ways that we can make sure that they've got access to resources, geographic information systems, and things like that. The final one on that, of course, is looking at the physical, spatial environment of the employees and making sure that that works well for them from a health standpoint and also that there's adequate space for future growth. Riverbank General Plan. When we're talking about promoting sustainable development, there's a lot of very exciting things happening in Riverbank right now. And one of the things that came out of this, the city really wants to focus attention on the update of the city's general plan and bring that up to speed. This would also include completing high-value strategic, I'm sorry, high-value specific plans, which should be the East Side Industrial Specific Plan, the Riverwalk Specific Plan, the Canary Site, and of course, following the North County Corridor as that goes through its process. So this is all kind of holistically included in there, as well as developing a regional stormwater plan and regional wastewater, I can't even say that fast. Economic development without jobs in the community and access to jobs, it's really hard to have that balance for your folks that live here and want to work here as well. So a number of things, very exciting, happening, obviously completing the Crossroads West Development, looking at ways to implement a permit streamlining system so that it makes it easier for folks to come in and it makes you more attractive when other developers do want to come into the community. And then focusing on manufacturing businesses as a way to really bring in those types of jobs. There was discussion about opportunities to hire either a contract or staff or part-staff economic development director, and that's something you'll have to have some discussions about when you start getting into your budget time, right? What is that going to look like? Is that a full-time person or part-time? And what's the expectation that council has with that? And I did share this with Sean because it's come up with some of our other communities. Hiring an economic development director is not, you know, the panacea for all things. So it can be a tool in your toolbox, but it's not like you hire the guy or gal and the next day, everything's all better. So something to think about as you go forward. And then finally, on this one, exploring opportunities to expand the city's incorporated boundaries. Lots of folks know that as annexation. So all the fun here at the end, we're winding up with enhancing the quality of life. One of the things that's so unique about Riverbank, obviously, there's a river. And there's also some really cool programs there. So some of the things we talked about were refreshing the parks. This would include things like the benches, restrooms, other types of things to put in more amenities so that folks can use them. It would also be taking a look at developing recreational facilities like the Aquatic Center, supporting youth activities, and then really looking at things that do capitalize on the Stanislaus River in terms of either tours or things you can get out there. But really, in general, making sure that people are out all the time. Now, these also include, let me go back here, environmental things. This would be things like the sound wall on the east side of the BNSF facility there, and also looking at anything you can do to support air quality. That's, again, everything from, you know, charging stations to downtown, or I believe, I think it was Councilman Uribe was talking about different types of particulate that you could use for streets. So anything and everything that, you know, makes you more environmentally friendly and improves your overall peace. Electric charging stations, we talked about the youth commission. And this was the other one that is challenging, and I think you're going to be hearing some of this tonight with regard to the wine and walk, right? Community events are great, and everybody likes to go to them, and they get all excited, but when you ask them to plan them, sometimes, you know, the Indians leave the room. None of the people there would actually do. So one of the things we talked about is really finding those kind of partnerships that are going to work well with the community, making it easy for smaller groups or other types of groups to hold events in the downtown or other areas, and really to cross-promote using the city's available resources and the communities so that you're really maximizing what you can do and not doing too much, but just making sure that you can make it easy to go. And you probably remember this from our discussion, this is really what the implementation of a good strategic plan looks like. At the first end, you really have your voters in the community that have all cast votes for you. They've said, these are the people that we want representing our interests in the city of Riverbank. So you are the policy and goal setters for the community. And every year or so, when you have this discussion, you know, you as the council say, this is what we believe our community wants. Sean is city manager. His job is to look at those strategies. You can contribute those as well, and certainly you did. But Sean's job is to say, okay, here's the strategies of how we're going to get there, and then he's going to work with his staff to make it happen and implement those things down. That becomes tactic, right? So as all these things move forward in the coming year, our hope is that when staff comes before you with a council item, an agenda item, that it should track back to one of these goals and specifically one of the strategies that's laid out there so you have a really good idea about how it connects to the overall vision and focuses both your fiscal and human resources on that. Now, I did want to point out, one thing that did not make it in the strategic plan but would come up as a policy discussion later was the idea of changing, I think it's Columbus Day, with a day off for Election Day. Because it doesn't go to the allocation of this sort of thing, our suggestion was that that comes back to council as a different type of item for discussion, but really, we couldn't find a place to really fit that in the plan itself. But with that, I'm available to answer any questions or take any comments. I think that the suggested action or lack thereof is either adopt, amend and adopt, or tell us we blew it and we'll come back and do it again. So with that, I turn that back over to the mayor.
I have just a couple of questions. I stepped out of the room for 50 minutes. And during that 50 minutes, we redid the mission and were providing professional services. We're here for municipal services.
Okay.
We have to be professional about it, but we're not here to provide professional services. That is a very broad base. And that's, and in the preservation of the historic downtown, I believe, I'll accept it if the council was willing to go aggressive. Aggressive means that we have to go after the absentee landlords. We have to go fine them if they don't repair. We have to continually advise them of shortfalls. And in that, if they don't improve, encourage them to sell. And as they change landowners, that's when your facade development can come forward. So we need to get aggressive on that.
Yeah, I think we should change tactics. I would be, I'd agree with that.
I would agree also.
Me too.
We have to determine what we want the historic downtown to look like. We have, what, about an 85% occupancy rate already? We only have a few that are not, but we need to get the absentee landlord to take responsibilities of their buildings.
So what I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, we have on the tactics, and there are 3.2A, is supporting the efforts of code enforcement. But we should, based on your comment, we should call out a line that says, you know, aggressively pursue landlords' work compliance.
That will be, I mean, I can accept it.
Yep.
But the council has to become aggressive in dealing with absentee landlords, people who will not take care of the properties that they are renting. And those who don't do anything, they either have to actively search for someone to lease or to improve it or to sell it. Those are the only three options.
Kendall, there's a couple of models that we've discussed very briefly offline that would fall kind of into the code enforcement. So I think the tactic works.
Okay.
And we'll just bring a policy that sort of specifically outlines that.
And then I caught the, we'll change to municipal services and so.
It was in there and you took it out, so I don't, I was gone. I'm sorry.
Well, what they did, just so you know, that we got different, you can see it up there. Some people gave us words that they wanted to see in it, and anyway, we sort of made sausage out of that. So I take responsibility for using the word professional as opposed to municipal, but it's an easy fix if you're comfortable with everything else.
Mayor, staff would like to say that we think we provide professional municipal services.
Professional municipal services. Okay, you guys had that consensus and I was out of the room. That's, that's fine.
We did talk about you.
I'm sure you did.
Can we just add the municipal services as part of it?
Yeah. Was there anything else that was missing, glaring that you guys, we missed?
I think it was very well presented. I felt like, just looking back at everything that we did, we did a lot of work that day, and I'm very proud of what we did. So thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you. You did a really great job, so I'm very pleased with this.
I feel the same way likewise.
I'm so glad.
Done good.
Okay.
Okay. So our action on this tonight is to approve and/or amend and approve the city's strategic plan.
Mayor, if you'll indulge me just for one moment, we have a former council member in the audience that I'm sure is thinking, is there a dog park on there? If you looked at the plan, it's under item 8.1A, so it's in there very clearly.
And it's up there twice, I think.
Yeah, I made sure of that.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on our strategic plan?
Yay. Actually, I like when people speak. I do.
Mayor and council members, good evening. Leanne Jones Cruz, Riverbank citizen here. And yes, I was over there looking very desperately for the dark park, so that was my comment. And I appreciate you throwing that in there because I did want to see that in the strategic planning, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
That must be under quality of dog life. Okay, any other public comment? Now I bring it back to the council for either approve and/or amend and approve, and the only amendment that I would suggest is that we include professional municipal services.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend it with professional services and then accept it as is.
Yeah, I'll second it.
We have motion to approve as amended, and a second.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you all, and thank you very much. Item 6.3, CalPERS, California Public Employees Retirement System Pension Cost Updates for the City of Riverbank.
Thank you, Mayor. So this has been an item that's been discussed for a long time by cities really throughout California, in particular, Riverbank. As council's well aware, we have struggled for a number of years to get a handle on what our unfunded liability payments are going to do to our budget over the next 15, 20 to 25 years and try to plan for that. It's something that the mayor has spoke about at great length. I think every single council member that's been part of this council has expressed concern over. So about four or five months ago, Maricela and I contacted NHA advisors and Craig Hill, who's here this evening, to perform essentially an audit of our PERS liabilities and do some forecasting for us about what does it look like today, what is it going to be in the following years, and then what do we do about it? And he's put together an extremely comprehensive report that was included in the agenda. I'd encourage any community member, staff person, or anybody else to please read it. It shows not only current but future projections and then some of our options. He's going to step through that with you tonight if you want to come up, Craig. And Craig has done this type of work for a very long time and has done it for a number of different communities, all with different problems and different concerns, but all tied to what are we going to do, right, Craig?
Yes.
So, take it away.
Good evening. Craig Hill with NHA advisors. Good to see some of you again. As Sean mentioned, we're, this is a very complicated topic, and had you had an actuary come in, you would have been thrown a lot of numbers and a lot of layers and terminology. So what we're really hoping to do is take the next 10 minutes, this is a little bit of an education based on the report that we've already provided to the city, but we're really trying to kind of keep this high level so that it's understandable for really everybody who has an interest in what's going on. So what we'll really try to hit on are, you know, what are the objectives of doing this analysis? What is it, what does it mean, other than just education? Kind of what are the historical costs that the city was involved in? And then, you know, the projections are done by CalPERS, so we aren't putting any magic into anything other than what's already in those reports that the city gets. We are focusing, as many cities are right now, on the impact on the general fund, right? Your enterprise funds, you can kind of build the cost of the pension into the rates. The general fund, you don't, you know, you just don't have that tool. So we're, we'll focus a little bit down on the general fund. And then, you know, what are the strategies for really dealing with this as the contributions that the city will have to make through its budget process go away? And then we can talk at the end about, you know, really what kind of direction or actions do you, that you, the council, want staff to work on. So real quick, the executive summary, you know, as you all know, there's rising contributions or rising pension costs, and as those go up, it squeezes the other expenditure line items that you have in your budget. Your unfunded actuarial liability, UAL, so I'll just use UAL going forward, but as everybody knows, there's really kind of two pieces to the pension contributions that you make. There's the normal cost for the here and now, and then there's this unfunded liability, which is really dealing with prior commitments and the assets that CalPERS holds for you. The good news is you do not have any real general fund-backed debt that gets stacked on top of this, so that's a, that's a good fact. You should be proud of that. Your current UAL is about 6.1 million, 5.2 in miscellaneous, and a little under 856 for your existing closed safety plan. The unfortunate thing, and again, you're not alone, is that not too long ago, that number was 1.8 million. So it's gone from 1.8 to 6.1. Your payments have also gone, your annual payments have increased from about 385 to 715. So it's, you know, almost doubled in a matter of six years and, you know, is projected to go over a million. So, and then what we'll do is we'll talk about what your options are for getting through this. So very quickly, as I'm sure you're all aware, your existing retirement plan has kind of four components. You have three under your miscellaneous, the classic, the second tier, and the pepper, which is the new one that has much more limited benefits. And you also then have your safety plan, which is closed, which is dealing with those that are already retired, public safety. They're all defined benefit plans. Regardless of how much money is in those trust funds, you have an obligation to make, you know, very specific dollar payments to folks, so that's why we call it a defined plan, unlike a 401K, as everybody knows, which you only have what's in the bucket. You are making payments, as I mentioned earlier, under two pieces. There's the normal cost portion, which is dealing with the current employees that the city has, and then you have the UAL or the unfunded actuarial liability, and that's really where all of these large contribution amounts are really coming from. So what happened? I've been in this business 30 years, and up until the 2000, it seemed like your normal cost contribution, the amount that you gave CalPERS, was earning a large enough amount that it was taking care of those employees and earning an amount that could deal with those current employees' future liabilities. So it was, you really were saving enough, and it was earning a rate high enough that it was actually going to stay even. Then things kind of tanked. And they tanked for two reasons. One, CalPERS began to take some losses on some kind of speculative investments. The combined investment return was not nearly as high, wasn't, you know, consistently beating 10%. And at the same time, most cities being told by CalPERS, it wasn't the city's fault, hey, you know, we're doing so well, you could actually improve your benefit packages if you want. So a lot of cities went along with that, had, you know, lowered the retirement age, increased the benefit, and very quickly, we went upside down. So instead of being super funded, where you had a zero UAL, you now had this growing liability that we just unfortunately haven't been able to catch up to over the last 15 years. The second thing that's going on is Uh, the second thing that's going on is that Calpers is realizing, one, everybody's living longer, and two, yeah, we probably shouldn't assume we're going to earn eight or nine or 10% every year. So, they are very systematically dropping their assumed interest rate that they're going to get on their portfolio. And as you know, it's billions of dollars. So, what that's forcing is your, the valuation of your assets is not growing at this imputed rate that, uh, everybody was used to. And at the same time, the, the payout to your retirees is lasting longer because people are living longer, and it's really, it's squeezing the delta between the two. So, in the case, as I mentioned, for, for Riverbank, uh, you know, you went from a 1.6, 1.7 million-dollar liability. Had you had cash, you could have given that to Sacramento and said, okay, we're back to zero. Um, but very quickly, that's climbed to over $5 million. So, let's look at this graphically. Um, what does this really mean? And, uh, we've got both the annual contribution amounts and then as it is, you'll hear the term, what percentage of payroll is going towards, um, pension contributions? And so, your current number is 19%. It used to be 13%. I personally don't really like the percentage number because what happens as we've seen a lot of cities downsize their staffing, their, their entire payroll reduces, right? Well, those contributions for UAL, they, they don't, they don't go down. If you have a, a smaller staff, a larger portion of your payroll has to go to UAL. So, it's actually forcing that number up higher or quicker because your, you have fewer staff or fewer payroll to actually make the same dollar payment. So, what you see in the bars, those numbers that are actually in the bars, the, the light blue, you know, those are fixed numbers, right? That is, that's, if you had one employee, you'd still have to pay $343,000 in a UAL payment, which, you know, would be 3X, right? It wouldn't be 19%, it'd be 300% of the actual salary. But you could see what's happened over the last just six years or seven years. You know, you've gone from having payments just inside of 400,000, uh, and this is just miscellaneous, up to, uh, just south of 700,000. On your safety plan, again, you've kind of got that all dialed in with your contracts and with the, um, the county. So, you've, you know, what you've got is, is a fairly fixed payment. All right, the UAL history, as I mentioned way back when in 2000, uh, things were going great. And then, uh, they stopped earning and stopped going to Las Vegas and gambling and making lots of, uh, you know, fairly healthy return. And so, what's happened since 2012 is, uh, and again, this, the, the bars represent the, the unfunded liability. You know, they've continued to climb. You can see the years where it dropped between 13 and 14. You know, that was a good year, right? They actually made better than they assumed, and so it actually reduced your unfunded liability a little bit. But then, if they don't do so well the next year, you know, it really starts to spike or they change the assumptions. And as you can see, it's gone from 1.7 to about 5.2 million dollars. And that's as of your last report in 2007. So, I want to, I want to take a moment on this slide. This has been really impactful in a lot of the, the meetings that we've had with councils and with, uh, in the workshops that we've done in a lot of communities. And, and, and I think in talking to the city manager, this is an important part of your budget process for the sole purpose of understanding, you know, on a long-term perspective, where is our budget going and where are our expenses going? So, while I just mentioned your incremental client, you know, uh, annual payments that you've been making, really what I want to bring to your attention is what's in that orange box. And what we're saying is basically through 2025, so call it another six or seven years of your budget cycle, cumulatively above what you're already making a payment for, you'll, you need to find a million seven. So, you're still making the annual payment that, you know, you've, you've, you've made it for this year. You've budgeted it. It's programmed in. You can, that's great. You should be able to do that year over year. But somehow or other strategically, you've got to be able to find another million seven just to stay even with what the, you know, the projected and, for the most part, fairly accurate Calpers, uh, requirements.
Craig, two things, just, um, I'll butt, butt out. But, um, the 1.7 million, that's just to stay current through 2025.
Mm-hmm.
Not cumulatively through the, the end of that large graph there.
No.
And, and two is, uh, just to point out to the community council, 1.7 million dollars, Maricela, represents nearly our entire reserve, right? Almost, almost all of it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, just to kind of put it in perspective of what we're talking about in magnitude.
Right. No, thank you. And, and it's, um, again, you know, we, we can look at what 30 years is, right? And we can see that, well, it's, boy, 2037, it starts to go down. That's sure a nice, that'll be a nice year to, to remember how things start to, to go down. But the fact is, and Sean's right, that this, um, you know, you will see an increase. It will really kind of level off starting in 2025, and, and then it'll start to drop off. And what happens is all of the UAL that you have has kind of a defined repayment. Think of it as you've got a 15-year mortgage on your house and you've got a 30-year mortgage on your house. The 30 is your normal cost. The 15-year is Calpers telling you, you know, you need to pay this off sooner rather than later. So, they're kind of forcing the issue by having you make as much of the, um, unfunded liability payments early. And it's, you know, we, we've got communities that we're, we're work with that, that are no by means huge cities. That little box is 50 million dollars. And you, we don't have an answer for how they're even going to, you know, build that into a budget because it's such a substantial amount of, uh, of money. Okay, so now, that's the whole pension. That's the whole Calpers obligation. Now, let's just focus a little bit on the general fund, which is obviously, from a budget perspective, the most important part. You know, 40% of your overall is picked up in your utilities and the enterprise funds. So, you know, this is, this represents really what the contribution is out of your general fund. And as you can see, we're talking about a current budget number of just inside of 400,000, growing to about 650. So, call it $250,000 in, uh, real general fund incremental that you'll, um, need to program in your budget. Okay, so, how do you deal with this? Right? What are your options? And you, we are not advocating for any of these. We're just simply laying out on the table what any number of your peer groups are looking at. You know, some have cash that, you know, that, they've collected sales tax or they've got kind of one-time money that they may or may not want to try to pay off some of this liability. Uh, others have zero cash, and so they're really looking for any other option that they could do. So, let's just talk left to right. Um, you know, your first one is every year, Calpers will actually give you a discount if you make the entire payment upfront. So, in July, you've already budgeted it for the whole year, right? And it's normally paid as part of the payroll cycle. You can actually pay it all upfront, um, in the first, in the first payment or in the first month. And for you, for that size, that, that represents about a $15,000 savings, right? So, that's a discount, you know, pay now and, and get the discount. Um, it is a cash flow issue. So, you know, dealing with, um, the city's cash flow and knowing that property taxes don't come in until December and April, um, and we haven't worked with, uh, Maricela or the finance staff to, you know, even see if this is a feasible solution. But, but for, you know, even doing an internal borrowing and just paying that, um, that one time in July, you know, it, it is a way to save approximately $15,000 in your case. And, um, the second one is the fresh start. So, this is actually going to Calpers and asking them, hey, can we, we don't like this hump. This hump is just, it's, it's too, we can't handle it. It's, it's just too much. And what they will do is they will re-amortize, so the hump isn't as bad. It gets kind of flattened. But they force you to pay it off sooner. So, it's literally like going from a 30-year mortgage to a 15. The good news is you'll probably get a lower interest rate. The bad news is you're paying more principal sooner. So, the payments actually might go up sooner, but not peak in the middle, right? So, you save from an interest perspective or from a total payment perspective, it's great. But it does, uh, potentially put a lot of pressure on your contributions in the near term. Uh, the third option is, and this is assuming you have funds that you want to apply towards this, is to set up, set up a, uh, Section 115 trust, which is, uh, the way I like to describe it is it's kind of like a parallel trust fund to Calpers. And I can talk about that a little bit more. Um, but it, it, the money stays local. So, you're, you're budgeting for it. You're putting it into the lockbox. It is committed to the pension. You can either let it grow and make, uh, pension payments out of that to the retirees, or you can use it to actually make the payments in the future to Calpers in the year, let's say, that you just didn't have the money. So, we have cities that are thinking about, you know, we have $5 million right now that, uh, we got from a land sale. We're going to hold it in the 115 trust. And then, we're going to, knowing that we've got this rising payment, we know we're going to use 500,000 of it three years from now to, to make that, that, that incremental payment that's too high. So, it's, uh, it's a way, we have, we have other, um, city councils that are just adamant about not sending money to Sacramento. They don't trust Sacramento. They don't want the money in Sacramento. And so, by keeping the money in 115, it's, it's actually, you're controlling what it's invested in. And you're, you, you can't spend it on anything else. It still is a pension lockbox. But you're controlling the investments. You're controlling kind of your, your future of, of what happens to that money. The other option, if you have cash, is to literally send it to Calpers and say, we would like to apply it to this particular UAL. And you're, you're effectively eliminating that debt. And so, you know, going forward, that your cash, your, your bills that you're going to get from them are going to go down. So, it's strategically, what you're saying is, Calpers wants to credit me, let's say, 7% uh, as an interest rate, so I'm going to give them the money. They're going to invest it at 7%. That's better than what we're earning here in our treasury, so maybe that makes sense. Um, the, the, the negative to doing that is you can't claw it back. Once you give it to Calpers, it drops your unfunded liability, so that's a good thing. But you can't decide two years from now, we really wanted that $5 million back. Um, it, it's, it's gone. So, uh, it, it is a decision not to be taken lightly. Um, your fourth option is the use of pension obligation bonds. Um, we don't necessarily advocate for them, but they are being used by communities to level out those payments. So, again, that graph kind of had this big hump. You go in, you could issue bonds. You could create your own repayment schedule that you like, that is at an amount you like, and then, um, you kind of control your destiny, right? Because it's, that money goes to pay down, uh, the Calpers' UAL, and you, you now know what your, your debt service is going to look like. And finally, just hidden over on the right, and again, we're not advocating, we just throw this out. Uh, but, but this is a conversation that's happening in a number of, uh, communities with the labor groups, is to improve or increase the employee's share of the pension costs as part of the, um, labor negotiations. So, you know, kind of to recap what I just showed on those bars, again, you can prepay, which every year at the beginning will save you about 15,000. You can ask Cal, Calpers for a fresh start, so they'll kind of re-amortize. But it does, um, cram the repayment into a, a shorter repayment period. You can use cash to either put into a trust fund or to be sent to Sacramento to pay down the UAL. Or you can use the, the cash, um, in reserves, which, I mean, you, if you used cash, um, then as it, as it mentions, you, you know, your levels would drop from 1.6. Uh, you know, you want to try to keep your reserve funds at, at about 10%. The last one is the POB. Again, this is not about playing interest rate games. You, you may be, you have seen information where you can issue pension obligation bonds at 4%, give the money to Calpers, and it'll earn 7, and you're going to make the delta, right? You're going to, the arbitrage is between the bond rate and the, we, that is not the GFOA, the league, nobody thinks that that's a good way to look at a POB. The only way you would want to do a pension obligation bond is, uh, again, if you were using it as some kind of a re-amortization so that you could control your, your payout or your annual payout. So, uh, really, our recommendation is certainly, we'll answer any questions on the report that was provided to you earlier, as the city manager mentioned, or this presentation. We typically, at this point, um, are just looking for feedback or thoughts. This is a little bit, you know, this is a lot of a policy conversation at this point on where you think you want to go. Um, and then, through the city manager, we can figure out what the next steps will need to be.
The, um, first off, uh, we've, we are a little bit ahead of the game of some of the cities. Our employees have agreed to a, um, subcommittee that will look at the pensions from, um, uh, Calpers and discuss, uh, come up with some type of a plan, whether one of your plans that you've shown up there, or what would be the buyout and go to some, someplace like Stan Sera. Stan Sera is a lower payment with a higher, um, return on, on investments.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, uh, but that's a discussion that we have to hold. And then, from there on, we have to go for policy. Uh, and I truly appreciate the, the employees going that route, um, because it's going to be a tough decision. Uh, I'm, all the options are on the table. But, you know, you, you spoke of up to 2000 where, you know, Calpers was doing very well. And then, they invested in Enron, who purposely tried to undermining California. So, and they invested in undermining California and lost almost a billion dollars. Okay, a billion dollars is a lot of money unless you're in high-speed rail. No, I'm serious. Um, they've had a lot of other blown deals like that throughout, uh, from 2000 on. So, their leadership needs to be, I know it's elected by the, uh, a lot of it is elected by the employees, but their leadership needs to be closely looked at. I myself, if I had, I would say, how much do we owe you, Calpers, bond for that? Pay them off and then go buy into Stan Sera or some other, other pension group. Um, Berkshire Hathaway has a very good, uh, public employee benefits. So, or something like that, that the employee group will have control over. Here, all they have control over is, will I, will I not get money at the time I retire? Because Calpers is playing a political game.
Mm-hmm.
You can't buy any stock, they won't buy any stock, if you're associated with a gun, whether it is transportation, whether it is investment into, or if it's the actual gun itself, which, um, that's their decision. If I was an employee, I would want to take control of my own destination and not feed it to, um, how much did that new building cost? A billion dollars? That was another billion. That's a B billion. And, and though they, they are a conglomerate. They are not there for the protection of the, the, um, pensions. They're there, they're a conglomerate. So, um, we have a lot of talking to do amongst ourselves, where we want to go. And it's up to what the, uh, the employees are willing to, to either risk or what they don't want to risk. But right now, as you've shown on your, um, uh, statistics, we have, if I read it right, 55 active employees taking care of 155 retirees. That's not good odds, especially when people are going to be retiring shortly. So, um, okay, I'm off my soapbox. I just have a quick question. The, the recent court case, how does that affect, uh, employees' contribution into Calpers?
So, the, the judge was, it, it was a very narrow discussion. And it was specific to the ability to buy years in the program. So, there was, um, there were communities that were getting in trouble because they were allowing some of their employees to buy air year, you know, the, I call them air rights, but they're basically, um, you, using their own employees' own money, putting it in, and then it's kind of effectively super funding their own, um, pension benefit because they've got an extra five years. And that's been kiboshed. So, I'm not even sure if that's, if it was in your program right now that you even allowed that.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Oh, no.
Okay.
But we do allow selling sick leave as, at the end of their, their years, and the vacation pay, and that's added on to their pension. But I believe that's limited too, is it not?
Sick time, Maricela? Remind me of that MOU section. Is there any sick time on the books they're going to apply towards their pension?
Isn't that up to 200 hours?
Well, there's a...
Oh, there is.
Maricela?
There's some big purchase, there's big cash out.
Yeah, that's, that's cash out, not with regard to, to applying it towards pension.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's different. That's, then I don't have any problem with that. It's, it's, I know a nearby group of firefighters have the option of cashing it out and applying it at the end, as well as vacation time. But it's, to me, that's, that's inflating their, their benefits without actually working for them. Okay? I'm off of it. Go ahead, council.
I had a couple of comments. I was on a league city, a council league committee for four years that dealt with this, and every time that we went, we always said, the state shouldn't be, the legislature shouldn't be being the investing body, because they kept blocking CalPERS from investing in other act businesses worldwide that were making a lot of money. But because it was, you know, with tobacco, or with a drug, or something like that, no, we're not going to do that. And I feel strongly, because for four years, we, we kept saying, we shouldn't be doing that, but they're still doing it. And I think this legislature needs to realize, that's not their job to decide what CalPERS should be investing in. That's why they have those people that are trained to do it. And I think that that's affected a lot of what they've been doing too. They need to change their attitude up there. And the other thing, the mayor sort of hit on it, and we had another example just a few days ago, they've got to, CalPERS has got to police itself better, because they're still all of a sudden getting these, like he was saying about the firemen's vacation funds. I think just recently, they paid out several million dollars from people that were all doing something with their vacation pay or something. This was just in the news a few, you know, a few, few days ago. So they've got to police themselves more, better too, to do this stuff. And that may help the situation, even though we got to do things on our end. I think the legislature needs to do some things on its end, and I think CalPERS needs to do some things on its end to stop this inflated retirement that a lot of people are still getting.
My question is regarding the CalPERS. So if we take our money and let CalPERS reinvest in it, how do we know that they'll reinvest it where it will grow? Right now, we don't, we have no idea, right? So is there some kind of mandated requirement for them to, you know, make sure that the money will grow? It seems like there isn't, because it hasn't over so many years. So how is it the, the employees or the CalPERS members, is it up to them to, you know, change, try to get some kind of legislation done, or new leadership? How can all this be done? I mean, everybody needs to know about it so that things can happen and change.
No, that's, that's a great question, and actually, there, there's two pieces to that. The first one is, they're, basically, the, to council member Campbell's comment, it's, you know, they, they're indemnified from making or losing money, right? The mayor hit on the billion-dollar losses. It's, yeah, it's a little bit of mud on the face, but they don't, you know, no heads roll, it's just, it all, because it all filters down to the, the participating members. So all the cities take, really take the brunt of any losses. So I really appreciate this question, because everybody needs to be crystal clear that any money you give to CalPERS, they could lose it the next year, right? And so what, what happens? It doesn't, so it doesn't really, you know, the money doesn't get, not just like that little bucket, but your unfunded liability, you'll just, you say, let, you know, I'll make it easy. $5 million liability, you give them $1 million. So you think, today, I should have a $4 million, pay down a million dollars. It went from 5 to 4. And Sean and Maricela get a report next fall, and it says, your unfunded liability is 8. You said, that should be 4. It went from, how did it go from 5 to 4 to 8? Well, we didn't do so well last year, right? So it's, when, when you think about giving them money, you, while you hope that they'll meet all of their assumptions, you know, they'll earn 7 or 7 and 1/4%, if that was the case, then, then you, you really would still be at 4 million as a liability. So it's, you have no control. And from a policy perspective, what's been really, I think, fascinating for us, talking to council members in all over the state, and depending on where you are, and what kind of community you're in, that concern about, well, we don't like not having any control over whether they're going to lose money or make money. So this is where this Section 115 trust concept comes in, and it's like a county, you know, private pool, because it then gives you local control over what we're going to invest in. There are administrators, administrators who will do these 115 trusts for individual cities, and no matter how much money you have in them, they'll say, do you want a conservative portfolio strategy? Do you want to have an aggressive portfolio strategy? And you may say, we just don't want to lose money. So let's, you know, we've got a professor, Joe Nation, out of Stanford, who's been hyper-focused on this for the last 10 years, and he says, nobody should be trying to hit home runs with pension money, right? They should be hitting singles all day long and not, you know, not whip sawing the, the returns. And so if that's the case, then you maybe take a little bit more of a conservative approach, and, all right, we're going to assume we earn 5% every year, but we're never going to be negative 15, right? We'll just be 5, and we'll just chug along, and we'll be fine. So, but you can only control that at the local level, the money that you hold here. And so that's where cities are starting to look at, well, just on, from a policy perspective, we like that, we would rather hold the money here for our residents and know that we're not giving it to Sacramento, and then potentially losing it in a really bad poker game. Not to say that CalPERS, we, we have looked statistically at how these individual administrators have done relative to CalPERS, and they've tended to mirror them. They really haven't, you know, when the market's bad, the market's bad, everybody has a bad mirror, right? So it's, they're, we're not in the business of trying to game out who's a better stock picker, but they do really kind of, I think, the way they're managed, they tend to all follow each other, just, the problem is with CalPERS, it's, you know, the billion-dollar mammoth that it, you know, it's an aircraft carrier, it doesn't turn very quickly when it's, you know, going one way or the other. So that's a great question, though, I mean, in terms of, how do you not lose, how do you, you, you have no power to hand them a check for $3 million and then tell them, don't lose the money.
With a 115 trust, that's just your current monies. You still have to pay off the unfunded liabilities over the next, until the old people die.
Right.
Okay. Just want to put that.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't, just ignore it. And what we've done, and again, this is an analysis that we're, we're happy to, to bring back, or through the city manager, but what we've done is, for other cities, you know, kind of build out a business plan for what a 115 trust would do, because then again, it's, it's a growing asset, right? You're going to make contributions every year to it. So yes, your unfunded liability looks like it's doing this on CalPERS, but you've got this growing pot that's over here. So the net-net should be, you know, the same. You're not, there, there is a tipping point where you actually could theoretically have enough money sitting local that you're, you're ahead of your unfunded liability in CalPERS. At that point, you might take it and pay off CalPERS, or you might just say, we like leaving it over here. So it is, it's a great question, and, and it doesn't make, you'll still have to report that UAL in your financial statement, no, no matter what you have in the trust fund, it's going to be the 5 or the 6 or the 10 million, or whatever it turns out to be.
And the trust fund is sanctioned by CalPERS.
Yes.
They cannot touch it.
Can't touch it.
Until the law is passed.
Right.
So I don't have any questions, but I do got a couple of comments, so I've been kind of racking my brain with this for the last couple of days, so. So the question I've been asking myself is, how do we better manage it going forward? So I don't think, I don't, I'm not leaning towards wanting to pass this debt on to the next generation, so I'm not in favor of a bond. I, I think right now is not the right time to consider exiting CalPERS, based on the cost. I think we should, maybe during the Legislative Action Day, maybe push for that SB, I think it's 681 reintroduction for that, maybe get it modified, so maybe we can exit in the future. And then my goal would be to switch over to 401K. So that's kind of where I'm leaning at on that.
The 115 trust?
Yeah, for a 115 trust.
Craig, can you outline, because this is just something that never really gets talked about enough, I think, in these kinds of presentations. Tell me what happens when, what if we have a recession and we can't meet our UAL? The bill comes and we can't pay it.
Right.
What happens? What's the practical fallout?
Well, so that's still being challenged, because there, there certainly have been some case studies for, for communities that don't. CalPERS position is, you know, it is the obligation of the city to, to pay the bill 100%, every, you know, 100 cents on the dollar for what you get. In the event those payments are not made, CalPERS reserves the right, in their opinion, to reduce the benefit, the, because again, this is just the UAL piece, right? So this isn't current employees, this is your retirees that potentially are still living in the community, or retired up in the hills. Their, their actual benefits could be reduced. They will, CalPERS will recalculate based on, well, if the city's not going to make its full payment, then, you know, my words, you reduce it 25%, we're going to reduce the payments to your former employees 25%. So it's, and there's been some challenges to that, and they're, it's still in the courts, but that's kind of CalPERS position on it.
But it has, they have already done it to some employees.
Oh, yes.
Just a quick comment on that. Maybe we don't need CalPERS anymore, because when they're doing that, they're doing it to make sure they can pay their employees and stay in business.
And their retirement.
And they're up there as a state agency, and that's why we can't touch them. They're just a brokerage, like, you know, your private broker cases. And yes, the market governs it, but what would happen if CalPERS went, went away? We don't have to pay their employees. That's a big savings statewide, and we shouldn't have to do that, and we bring it back locally. Just, just some thought.
Right.
Because they're not doing a terrific job, but yet they've got us, you know, in a elbow lock, because you got to pay, you know, we got to stay in business no matter what, no matter how much you lose.
Right.
I mean, that's one of the ways I see it.
And, and to council member Urius' comment on the, you know, kind of getting out of CalPERS, we work with a lot of small communities who, who, you know, have similar size unfunded liabilities like you, and they say, well, you know, we've got, we've got some cash, you know, how much is it to get out? It's, you're not paying, it's not the $5 million UAL, right? There, it's all of the future liabilities that CalPERS will claim. So what, unfortunately, it's, it's a little bit of a black box when, you know, the, the consultants or the city attorney or staff is reaching out to CalPERS and saying, can you give us a payoff? If we wanted to exit right now, give us a payoff. You have no idea how that calculation's being made, but I'm just going to throw a number out. They would tell the city of Riverbank, sure you want out, give us $75 million. And you'd say, where was that number coming from, right? But in their minds, they're, well, we have to assume we're only earning 2%, you've got all these, you know, defined benefit employees that are part of your UAL package, and that's the number we need. And it, so nobody's ever done that.
And they're protecting their jobs.
Okay. Craig, I'm going to ask for public comment. May I have anyone from the public wishing to comment on this subject? Seeing none?
Just one other little comment, because I think it factors into this sort of ongoing discussion that council's having about public safety. Craig, what would this, without going into too much detail, what would, what would this number look like for us in your kind of estimate if we had an internal police department that had a safety pension fund, or a safety formula under PERS? Normal 3% of 50, or whatever the new one is under PEPRA?
Uh, you know, I couldn't tell you that right now.
We couldn't afford it.
Is, is it safe to say it would be at least twice this much? Twice as much as the current amount?
Yeah, knowing, you know, comparative analysis to sister peer groups that, that are maintaining public safety, take your miscellaneous, and it's usually 2 or 3X that, for just the, the liability that goes along with it.
Okay. Any other comments, question? Again, we're going to be talking with the employees and find out what the, the best option is, and that subcommittee should be starting soon. And I want to thank you just for the information. We've been looking at this information now for five years, and I'm glad that we're going to proceed the way that we are.
Good. Happy to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll be asked to come back. Do we need to do any, we accepted the, his report. Do we need a vote?
No.
Good. Item 64, 2019 Cheese and Wine Festival Workshop.
Thank you, Mayor. At the February 12th city council meeting, council awarded the bid of the, for a year of the wine and cheese festival coordination to Chris Riki. During the meeting, a couple council members requested that Mr. Riki come back and have a quick workshop on some ideas that he has, and also some ideas that council or the community may have about this coming year's festival, and he was happy to do that, and so he's here tonight. I think you have a short presentation, right, Chris? So come on up.
First, I want to say, last year was great.
Oh, thank you. Well, Mayor Council, thanks so much for having me again. I thought we could run through just a few things on cheese and wine, since you guys were super interested. One of the first decisions we're going to make this year is like our new logo for this year. So we designed a new logo each year, that's the logo we put on the glass, that's the logo we use on our website, in our social media. So I thought that after we've gone through about 20 different logo options, these were kind of our top two. So if you guys, you know, want to kind of, you know, give us your opinion on what you think, or if the public has some ideas on which one they might like better, those are the two we started with, so. We can always go back to them later, but that's what we're thinking there.
Good.
Yeah. See if I can figure this, this, I always have trouble with this thing. All right, so for 2018, we added some stuff. We did the sip and paint, which I hope a lot of you guys saw. It was really cool. You could come and have a glass of wine, you could do real oil painting, be taught how to paint. It was cool. We had two sessions of the four sellout, the afternoon sessions did better than the early sessions, but it was a good experiment. We put a French wine café out on the street, we brought wines from France, lot of fun, it was really successful, and so we're going to hopefully build on that next year. We also created an area called the yard, where we had games. We thought that it'd be games that adults would play, maybe some kids. Turned out, they were just mobbed by kids all day, so we learned something from that. It was real successful. And finally, we moved a stage from the park out front to Third and Topeka, and that really revitalized that part of the festival. So all, most of the changes we made last year were quite successful. All right, so some new plans for 2019. We're going to take what we learned from the French wine café, and we're going to create six cheese and wine tasting stations on the street. So one of the, one of the things that we've seen year after year with the wine tasting at Antigua, is that people come with their kids, and you can't go into the wine tasting area unless you're 21. So those kids are, those kids, those parents aren't really able to have, you know, a couple tastes of wine while they're here. So we thought if we bring that out to the street, that'll give more people an opportunity to participate in the wine tasting and the cheese tasting. In addition to that, I think it sets us apart from some of the other festivals, right? So like, if you go, what, what we want to try to do is make Riverbank Cheese and Wine stand out from, say, the Almond Blossom Festival, or the Houston Fruit and Nut Festival. We want to have a different personality. So I want to, I want a person that goes to this festival to feel like it's distinctly different from, say, the Chocolate Festival. So this is a way that we can do that. And so what we're thinking is, you can go in, go to that wine tasting area, and have a taste, like try a little taste of whatever wine you choose for $2. So it'd be kind of cool. And another thing that I'd like to do, and I have to get with law enforcement on this to see if it's safe, but I'd like to see if we could have glass on the street, because that would be a really good visual for people. They could buy their Riverbank Cheese and Wine glass, walk around on the street, and it's like a cool experience, so I, it's something.
They buy them anyway, and they, or they walk around the street with them anyway.
It's just not legal, that's all. You know?
Okay.
We don't serve into glass, I know that for sure. Another thing is, we've been working on, one of the feedback we've been getting from the, from residents, is that there's not enough local vendors. I think, and I agree, there aren't. If you look down our vendor list, and you look for the 95367 zip code, you don't see enough Riverbank residents participating. So the concept that we've been developing is to create a special for Riverbank residents So the concept that we've been developing is to create a special for Riverbank residents. If they sign up early, they can get a vendor space for $100. We've budgeted for that. I think it'd be really cool. It could be businesses, it could be residents that want to, want to have a booth, whatever. Now, slight asterisk, it has to be approved by Parks and Rec. They have to say that this booth's okay, so it won't be just anybody. But I think it's a really great opportunity. I think it'll start letting people know that if you live in Riverbank, this is your festival, and it's not going to be, it's not going to price you out. And at the same time, it protects our festival revenues for vendors, because since 98% of our vendors are from out of Riverbank, it's not going to affect our income streams there. So that's really important, and that's the kind of thing I've been looking for, is how can we protect our vendor revenue that keeps this thing floating and address the issue of the vendor cost being too high for average people? So I think it might work. The way that we let people know about that is by sending, putting an announcement in utility bills. And so I think that that's something that we can do in, what, was it April or May or some? It's coming up in the next couple of months, that we have that opportunity. So that's another thing we're working on. I also want to create some more of those games, because we had games that did really well. Giant Uno did really well. Giant Connect Four did really well. What can we do that kind of, you know, that people really like? And so some of the stuff I want to do, like, I like to do Pinewood Derby. I know that there's a lot of kids that don't get experience Cub Scouts. You know, like, my son wasn't able to do Cub Scouts, and like, he would have really loved the Pinewood Derby, right? So like, if you can.
Was that the small one?
Yeah, the little, the little cars. But what I want to try to do is create an opportunity so that you could walk up there with your son or your daughter, take an hour, build a car, and race it. And I think it'd be a really cool family experience. So that's something I'm working on. Also, we have human foosball, which is, it's just like real foosball, you know, foosball with little soccer dudes that you, you spin and score goals. Well, we have human foosball, so you can actually go in there and you're actually the little foosball guy, and you can kick the ball into the net, and it's, it's a lot of fun. And we also have giant cornhole. So there's like the little cornhole with the little beanbags, but you see that at every festival, and like, it's not, it just isn't that popular. But giant foosball, you actually throw beanbag chairs as opposed to the little beanbags, and it looks really cool and it's fun. So we could bring that. So those are the kinds of things I'm thinking about. And, how do you play a video? Do you? That's what it looks like. It's like a five-second video. That's human foosball. And then, this is what giant cornhole looks like. Guys getting fancy, and one of them finally scores. There we go. Yay!
Mayor, did you see that Irish cornhole?
I did, I saw that.
All right. I changed it to giant for this one, right? So, and then if you don't know what Pinewood Derby is, it's just little cars in there on a little track.
Well, that's going to take more than an hour to complete.
Well, I agree, but.
Are you going to have them pre-designed?
Well, you know, I'm still working out the details.
I mean, that's a cool idea.
Yeah.
But I think that is something that you introduce weeks in advance, and then they come by and race them.
Well, we could do that, too. Maybe both, but like, what I wanted.
It took me a week to get mine whittled down.
Yeah, and I did mine when I was a kid. Yeah, we, we, we like spent hours sanding it and painting it and stuff, right?
Putting the weight in the front, which is illegal.
Exactly, like in the perfect spot. But I was thinking like what we could do is like, because like, in order to make it right, you need like a jigsaw, right? Well, the average person doesn't own a jigsaw or have access to a jigsaw, right? So like, what I was thinking is like, I could get someone like my dad, who's got all these tools and jigsaws and stuff, you know, and set one up, and like, you just draw the design, and then they cut it for you. I don't think we could actually paint them. I think that might take too much time, but I think the cutting would only take five minutes or so with a decent jigsaw, so.
Okay.
You know, but, so it wouldn't look as fancy as these cars, which are great, but it would still be fun.
Well, there's a woodworking shop, club that meets at Scout Hall. When do they meet?
Monday nights, first Monday of the month.
Okay, like the first Monday of April Fools' Day.
See, that would be cool.
Yeah, have someone present in front of them, see, if they have something like that, if they would be willing to help out.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. And I think your idea of having people do it in advance, I think is really good, too. Like, we could advertise that, like, go down to this place, you can buy your kit and get it all set up for the races, right? It'd be fun.
That's cool.
So, but yeah, so what ideas you guys have?
Nice.
Or questions?
Okay, guess I'll go first. So I did like the French café setting, where people could go and relax. I just thought that was really cool. And then, just a comment about our nonprofits. The service of our nonprofits in Riverbank, we have collaborated with this event for many years, and what we do is use this event for fundraisers, so that the funds that we do raise goes right back into the Riverbank community and, you know, through our organizations. So I just want to continue that piece up and work along with the nonprofits. And then also, we'd like to see that we take the appropriate steps to ensure that the safety of our minors is always forefront at our, you know, at our wine and beer booths for safety purposes. That's all. That's all I have.
I agree.
Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, I think the Cheese and Wine has improved drastically since you took it over the first year several years ago. And you're doing a good job, and I like your ideas that you've got up there. Some people have to realize it'll never be like it was in the 60s or the 70s, it's just not going to happen, because the world's changed. But I had a couple of comments several times from vendors that were, from some of the nonprofit people that were working selling the beer in the beer booths and the wine, and one of them said they didn't have like the proper tools, there wasn't a wine bottle opener. And then several of them had commented to me that picking the money up needed to be done more often, because they were getting too much money in there. And so if you could improve on that, I think that would help them out, because I guess some of them were sitting there with several hundred dollars, and they said they'd be picked up in an hour, and they didn't hit them or something, and they got worried about that much money. So those little things, if you clean them up, would help it out.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, I got, let me just, let me just answer that. So like, my company doesn't serve alcohol. Like, we actually sell that to a nonprofit. So like, that's not, I mean, so we, what we do is we sell that, the right to sell the beer to a nonprofit, and they give us cash. So that's what we want, right?
Whose responsibility is it, is the nonprofit to pick up the cash? Okay.
So, but what I can do is, I just want to be clear on that. So I can discuss that with them so that they know. But I just want to make sure that you know that it's not like, at least the way the law's written right now, like, I can't have a liquor license and do this, so.
Thank you.
Got you. So I reached out to a lot of residents, just got a lot, I got a lot of feedback, so I'm just going to, just kind of list them through here. The biggest concern was the lower price for the vendor booths, so thank you for considering that. They like to see a focus on craft vendors, like handmade stuff. They wouldn't like to see, where was it at here? Sorry, I'll go through, scout. They would not like to see like solar panel installation vendors, DirecTV, stuff like that, so just kind of focusing more on like the craft side of stuff. Even inviting Home Depot, you know, they do, they do some craft stuff, also maybe invite, inviting them over. For music, maybe one main stage for the music, and a second stage geared towards like open mic talent show, something like that, maybe. The size, can we expand it? Maybe can we go back to the community center? I don't know if that's an option. They'd like to see a petting zoo, maybe in the, in the community center area, in the shaded area. As far as the weekend, I'm still okay if we move the weekend also. I don't know if we have to set, because of tradition, if we're set to that, maybe might help turn out. Maybe for sponsors, any sponsors that give $5,000 or more, maybe show a little recognition, maybe throw a little sponsor event for them the night before as a thank you or something like that. And then you kind of touched on the wine tasting, you're going to be doing it differently, so this doesn't actually apply.
Well, we're going to do the regular wine tasting.
Oh, you will be doing it? So what they, they, they suggested was maybe doing, separating red wine and white wine, maybe doing three-hour blocks, maybe that would give some options for both. Some people don't like the red, they maybe just like the white, so, just, just an idea there, and.
Drink red or white?
Yeah, and I think that's all I got.
Okay. I mean, I'd be happy to go through all of them, but that's a super long list.
Just some suggestions, I gather them all up.
Because like, there's, there's stuff you could say on all that stuff. A lot of it, you know, there's, a lot of it, like, there's a lot, there's a lot of questions. Like, if you want to expand back to the community center, you know, there's a whole litany of liabilities and, you know, flow questions that you have to answer when you do that type of stuff, right? So at this point, in terms of expansion, if we get the vendors, we'll expand, and that's the direction we're going to go. What I don't want to do is just expand it for the sake of expanding it. You know, what ends up happening is then you end up with miles of festival with no people, right? And then it just doesn't look like it's an exciting festival, right? So, and the other issue with, you know, as we continue to go into the neighborhood, we're going to have more problems, because like Councilmember Martinez said over here, you know, what's going to happen is you got, you'll have people on their front lawn serving alcohol and no controls whatsoever. And that has not been a problem, because we haven't been in that area. And if, as, as the chief said, you know, we've had pretty safe events the last few years. As we expand into the neighborhoods and the controls of the alcohol distribution lessen, the risk and the problems are going to increase. Now, that's, that's not to say we can't do it, because we can, and we're going to do it this year, because we're out of real estate. But if we add two blocks or three blocks, every block you add, the risk increases. So we have to think about that type of stuff.
Yeah, and again, just.
I don't know.
Just suggestions.
Yeah. But I'm, if you want to email those to me, I could give you more specific answers about each one. Some of them are really good ideas.
My only comment, and I think you do it verbally, verbally, but have an exit survey from your vendors, and that way they can say, this is what we found was not, the ice truck didn't come around enough times, or, you know. But that's, that's for your own internal use, that's not for publication, because the event has been getting better each year, and I look forward to the next event.
Thanks.
Chris, one question I got, so Councilmember Fosse is on the ladder tonight. I can circle around with some of her ideas, but most of them were sort of brought up. The idea of this was mainly not necessarily to tell you, you do this, was just to kind of throw out some bubble ideas for you that may or may not work. But one of the questions that's come up sort of repeatedly is, when you're administering sort of the vendor selection, and let's say you get a hot dog guy, and then hot dog guy number two comes, and he wants to come, okay, well, maybe we could fit him in somewhere else. And then hot dog guy number three shows up. At what point, with regard to food selection in particular, do you say, look, we have already got a hot dog guy, it's not that big of a festival, we don't need two hot dog guys or six hot dog guys?
So we generally max it out at two hot dog guys.
We're talking about something that's a more specific type of food that not, you know, maybe not everybody's going to want, right?
I mean, generally, it's two.
Lemonade, great example.
Generally, it's two, you know, generally, it's two vendors of the same, selling the same stuff, as the max will go. You know, but there's some stuff, like, if you talk about solar, or you talk about, you know, DirecTV or whatever, we don't really put a limit on those. Why is that? That's because they're, they're the bulk of our revenue. So like, if we were to not, you know, if we were to not sign those up, we wouldn't be profitable, so.
Does anyone buy solar or DirecTV at the Wine and Cheese Festival?
Indeed, that's why they keep coming back. And, and not just those two, I mean, it's air conditioning, it's all sorts of stuff. I mean, that's why.
I just, and I just, incidentally, hot dogs, just to illustrate, if I love hot dogs, you could have six hot dogs, it'd be fine, I do. Thank you.
But yeah, that's how we try to do it, because what we want is, we want each vendor that comes to the event to make money and to come back the next year, right? So you don't want to make sure they make money. And there are some exceptions, like with tacos, they've been so popular the last few years, that I think we had three taco vendors last year. They all did, but they all did really well. None of them complained, so, you know, it's not a perfect, you know, just two of each rule, but that's kind of what we go with.
And it's a tough balance, too, right? Because if you have something that's people really want, and you only have one of them, then people don't want to wait in line forever, right? Okay, thank you.
Well, we had like two ice cream guys last year, and one of them did really well, and one of them did really bad. But I think it may have just been because it was the kind of ice cream, right? Like, one was kind of like more of a Hispanic ice cream, and one was Italian, and the Hispanic ice cream just slayed, and the Italian one, no one, no one wanted, so.
Question about the vendors. Selection for where they're at, you know, their site, how is that made? Is it by who comes first, or?
Yeah, it's generally who pays first.
Okay.
Kind of their, they get the best choices.
Okay, because I've had some complaints about, why am I way down here, and there's some newer people that are up here, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's totally what it is. It's like, if you turn your, like, if you're a vendor, right? You're selling, you're selling ice cream, it makes sense for you to wait till the very last day to pay that vendor fee, right? So if you pay that, if that festival's on Saturday, and you pay the vendor fee on Friday, then you're only out that 500 bucks for 24 hours. If you pay it now, you're out that 500 bucks for six months, right? So from a vendor's perspective, it would be better to pay it at the last minute. From our perspective, we want them to commit to going and to pay now. So we have to, we kind of have to like bind that happy medium, right? So that's kind of the story.
Okay. Anyone from the public wish to comment?
I just have a couple of comments, Leanne Jones Cruz. Two things. One thing I didn't hear is that I'd like to see paying close attention to the city businesses. Last year was really awesome that the vendors were in the middle of the street, so that the businesses that are down there could benefit from that. In the past, the configuration of it caused some issues for some of the business owners, so if we can continue with that, I'd love to see that, that'd be awesome. And then I have a suggestion for the, the six vendors of the wine tasting. I'm wondering if we can't include some of the local businesses that are down here, and seeing if some of those six spots wanted to be placed in front of their stores or somehow attached to some of them. I think you might get some buy-in with the downtown folks if you offered that to them. I know for a fact that might be true. So I would like to kind of see that happen, that we kind of incorporate those six other locations with some of the existing businesses that are down there. And I have some thoughts, if anybody cares to call me about that, and we can chat, so. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I think we provided you with some, not real guidance, but input, and thank you for what you're doing, and continue the improvement. Thank you, Chris. Item 6.5, acceptance of the Patterson Road Sidewalk Project and authorization to file a notice of completion.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is not an item that we typically would agendize for new business, for actual discussion, but Kathleen and I had, have had a number of conversations that there's a lot of really great work happening at the City of Riverbank, and one of the things we talked about during strategic planning is taking time from a community communication perspective, and really celebrating when we have some neat things that happen versus just accepting them and moving on to the next thing, which is sort of the way most of us staff members work. And so I had sent Kathleen an email and said, hey, you know, I really think we should chat just very briefly about this project, because it writes a very long-term wrong that has existed on Patterson Road for a really long time. So Kathleen, if you want to come up and talk a little bit quickly about the project that just got completed, and there's some pictures, I think, too.[1744.88]
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So, I'm excited to, uh, be able to share with you some sidewalk and ADA improvements. So, tonight, I'm asking for acceptance of the Patterson Road sidewalk project and authorization to file the notice of completion. So, the contract was awarded in September, um, 147 and a little bit of change. Um, we had a few change orders, so the total cost of the project was a hundred and, about 152,000. So, we did the stretch of Patterson, this was infill, so it wasn't the whole, um, we didn't do the whole area there, um, but it went from, uh, First Street to Claus. And so, now, there's a complete path of travel for students, residents, um, anyone who wants to walk along that stretch. So, here is an area where there was not an ADA, um, and it shows, um, where we put in some ADA improvements. Um, there's some sidewalk there that was buckled up, so what we did is we took that out and replaced it. And here, this is, um, in front of a business, um, just basically, you couldn't walk there. Um, we've added sidewalk, we have a little retaining wall, um, to keep out some of the stormwater onto the business side. And here's another area here where we've put in the sidewalk. So, the cost of this project, um, we received funds from congestion mitigation, air quality, so CMAC funds, and then our local transportation funds. So, the project was completed within budget. So, tonight, we're just asking for acceptance of that project, so...
First off, that's great. Was that LTF Other?
Yes.
So, when Eighth comes here, we lose both CMAC and LTF Other. We've already lost...
That's what they've, they're talking about, yes.
That's good. Um, no, that, that is great work. I don't know that you have some other projects coming on up.
We do have quite a few coming up.
And I think they should be celebrated. And a lot of it, as we, uh, recommission the, or whatever we do, um, the, um, community center, um, things like you, the community center should be highlighted, as well as other projects that we have completed and are completing, because you have some exciting, um, projects coming on up, even though it's ADA or sidewalk improvements or, but, um, I, I appreciate the efforts that you personally have to go through to get funding, um, to complete these projects. As in Clarabel Roselle, you had to get the funding three times, um, and it's gonna get done by Friday.
Yeah, yeah. Friday of which month?
Well, it's still up there, 3:15.
Yeah.
I know, it's gonna be July.
Yeah, but, um, just really excited to bring to, um, before you, um, the SB1 funds. I'll be bringing a report, 'cause I have to do a filing for that, um, so that'll be brought to you in April. Um, we're working on an Eighth Street overlay. Um, we're also working on a new slurry seal and, um, crack seal project, so I'll be bringing that information to, to you shortly as well.
And they completed the undergrounding of utilities on Morel?
They're working now, AT&amp;T and, um, Charter are working on their part of it. So, yes, MID's completed with their portion.
Very good.
Well, thank you.
Comments, questions? Anyone from the public wishing to address, come on up.
I'm not sure. But, um... Mayor O'Brien and the City Council, I'm Marilyn McRitchie. Um, I just wanted to ask what's happening with the crosswalk by St. Francis of Rome Church, if you have an update on that.
So, uh, I think I could probably handle that. Um, we have cleared a couple of super important hurdles. One is, we've been authorized, we've essentially taken it on the city's dime to, to draw up , uh, conceptual, was Caltrans, you know, blessed, um, and we've been assigned a project manager at District 10, which doesn't sound like an important step, but essentially, what that means is that Caltrans has committed themselves to seeing the project through, um, to the end. So, there's now a person just reviewing these documents that will eventually, we're, we're in construction document sort of review phase, um, and then we're going to essentially request approval to build it. And Caltrans will either, uh, they've already committed to us, at least verbally, that they're supportive of the project, they have their super lengthy process they make you go through. Uh, but what we did get was, uh, word that Caltrans is going to be doing a pretty significant overlay project, starting essentially on the other side of Riverbank, all the way to Oakdale. And so, one of the things Kathleen and I have discussed is possibly piggybacking on that, because it'd be nice not to have to tear up brand-new road after they pave through 108. So, that's, in a nutshell, sort of where we're at with it. And if, is there anything else, Kathleen, that I forgot?
Just wanted to say one other thing, is that, um, a lot, not everybody's been able to see, uh, the residents have not been able to see the concept plan, but if they go to the mayor's State of the City tomorrow night, we will have a poster board, a large poster board, that'll show what the design is, um, is going to look like, so, just wanted to invite everyone to that.
Which more, includes more than a crosswalk, it's full improvements, a median, a, a safe spot for people when they're crossing the whole, the whole night.
Marilyn, now, you have to realize, with Caltrans, we're about five years ahead of the game, and at one, because it, it is such a long process with Caltrans, and then they put you into their construction phase, and we're gonna bypass, they usually program it out five years. So, we're hoping that within 18 months, we'll either start construction or have it completed. But that is, uh, working with, now, Dennis Agar is gone, uh, so Dan McElhenney is now the new, um, acting director, and we're gonna get to him to see, uh, I've already talked to him about it, to, um, uh, get us the, in his production schedule, uh, sooner than later. Whatever that means, when he's nodded yes, whether he'll be there in a month or so, I don't know. Well, that is fast. See, it's not like in the Navy where you can go 30 knots and get to the spot. You, here, you have to debate it, then you have to agendize it, you have to, um, make sure there's no brown act, and then... Okay. Do we have a motion on item, uh, 6.5?
I make a motion, we approve item 6.5.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve, second.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Yuribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you, Kathleen. Staff, comments?
Just one comment, Mayor, there's many things I could say, but what I want to just continue to push out to the, uh, council and community is, uh, March 19th, next week, Crossroads West specific plan, EIR and associated documents, will be going to the City Council at a special City Council meeting for consideration. This is culmination of many, many years of work, and, uh, so we really just want the public to, to participate. Um, we're, we're very proud of how, how much work we've put into just getting it to this point, so, hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yuribe.
Okay, so I do have, uh, just one announcement, it's a big announcement for me. Um, so there is going to be, uh, a new resident of Riverbank, of Riverbank in July. Uh, my wife and I are expecting a baby. Uh, so she's 21 weeks and one day today. Uh, we do not know the gender yet, but we'll find out March 24th. Uh, they are both healthy, so I wanted to share that with everybody. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell.
Just like to invite everybody to the State of the City address tomorrow night. Uh, you'll learn some things, as, uh, was just mentioned a few minutes ago, and I hope to see you there.
Vice Mayor.
Love Riverbank is April the 13th. Um, the community will be able to sign up for projects to help beautify our city, and also to help our residents that are in need. And I really appreciated our reports on Calpers and the DLA, and I look forward to further discussions on both of those topics. And, um, I also look forward to working on our strategic plan. I think it, that we had a very eventful day, and I'm very proud of the, uh, the outcomes of what we did that day. Um, and then, applications for Citizen of the Year, Youth of the Year, um, those applications are on the city website. The, um, celebration day will be April the 27th, and that'll be the date of the dinner, and it will be at the community center, the really renovated, nicely, new community center. So, come out to our, uh, dinner and help celebrate, um, that day with us. Thank you.
Thank you. May is Bike to Work Week. Uh, yeah, let me say that. May is Bike to Work Month, and Bike Safety. I'd like to have, uh, the move come and give us a presentation, and then, uh, see if we can get some people to bike to work. I'm retired. I'll be out of state, uh, travel at the end of next week, and I'll be, uh, attending the city council meeting from, uh, far, so that would be the next one. So, uh, the vice mayor will be in charge, listen to her, I do. And, um, how much longer are we waiting for the electronic sign? Now, this is something that could have been purchased and put up in three weeks, I think we, we were told. And it's now been, what, two months?
There's a, Mayor, there's a, a longer story about that's not appropriate for the public to hear, so I'll tell you about that after, where it's... Oh, we're still working on it, it's not, it's going to happen, we are working on it, there's just more...
You know, it would be nice to advertise, "Love Riverbank, April 13th."
Where's it going?
In Riverbank.
Oh, nobody knows where.
No, no, we know where, it's gotta be right down at the, well, it's supposed to be, at the corner, but I think that may be the stickling point right now.
There, there's a couple locations, we're gonna have more than one sign, so there will probably, we've got a number of locations, one of them was up kind of near the Del Rio, along the highway.
The one on Oakdale Road, in Crossroads, where it advertises the cheese and wine and the...
No, no, this is an electronic sign.
Permanent?
Yeah, it's, it's like the one in Oakdale, the big one, as you're coming on in, it, it has all different, and it can do community events as well as advertisement, is a...
The one spot by the candy there, the old candy?
No, it would be...
Trees are growing up.
Yeah, and it's just too, you have to raise it way too high for people to see it. So, we're gonna put it in areas where it could be low in profile, but...
Well, this is where we can't have discussion on these items at this point.
Please.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, item 8.1, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, property APN 132-011-017, agency negotiator Sean Scully, City Manager, property negotiator Horizons Limited. Item 8.2, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code Section 54956.8, property 062-031-005 through 007, agency negotiator, excuse me, uh, Sean Scully, City Manager, property negotiator Ametis Inc. Item 8.3, conference with legal counsel in initiation of, of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 Delta 4, case, number of cases, one. At this time, public may comment on the closed session items prior to us going into closed session. Is there any public comment? Saying none, we are adjourned to closed session. negotiators, Horizons Limited, direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.2, report from closed session on item 8.2, conference with real property negotiators, Amadas Inc., direction has been provided to staff.